Okay, we're gonna get started and with the Pledge of Allegiance. Can I have a motion for approval of the present agenda? Questions or comments? Any post? On paper? Okay, we are moving into public comment. For anyone that's new here tonight, this first public comment of two, we'll have one at the beginning of the meeting, one at the end. This one is intended for any comments about today's agenda. There will be a second public comment at the end of the meeting for any comments that may not be specifically pertaining to today's agenda. So if you do have a comment, you can raise your digital hand if you're online with the raise hand button. Or you can make your way up to the round table and sign in here. So I'm just gonna pause for half a minute here to see if we have anyone and then we'll move forward if not. How many people we have online? Okay. We're gonna move on into board comment. Do any board members have comment? I have perhaps not an entirely school oriented comment, but I have a Main Street office and the elementary school let out early today. PD conference day. Not PD, all conference, right? All conference. And it was really exciting to just see how the kids are clearly very excited about the weather. I'm hoping that's gonna translate here into the school and we're not gonna lose them all, but out the windows, but it was it was fun seeing everyone stream by after school there. They're not nearly that excited on other days, so. That's my only comment. Anyone else? Yeah, that's good.
Is it on?
Yep.
I had an opportunity to sub this week for Sandy Fisher and we were able to watch the robotics competition. And it was pretty impressive to watch this little guy compete and the students were all very excited. We got to watch a very, very good match, so it's impressive that we were able able to do that for the kids.
Thank you for that, Dawn. I'm excited to, I'm hoping we get a video snapshot in a few minutes. Okay, we're gonna move on into the student representative report.
Sounds good. Okay. Yeah.
Mia has a presentation, just give me a second, I'll get it up on the screen.
Yeah, so while Dr. D'Angelo is pulling that up, just some regular business. I saw Little Women and I thought it was awesome, so big congrats to everyone that did that. And then in my class, we also tuned into the robotics competition. That was pretty nice to see and support. Okay, so moving on to the school safety student survey. So if you've been tuning in, you've known that this has been a pretty big deal for student government and particularly me in the school year. So I'll be giving a report on the school safety student survey that I sent out. So we got 62 responses. And as you can see, it's pretty equally divided up through the grades. So we have 29% 12th grade, 25.8% in 9th grade, 19.4% in 10th grade, and then 25.8% in 11th grade. So we got equal representation and responses throughout the grades. Please. So this is the question that I asked them, how safe do you feel attending school every day? So on this one to five scale, five being very safe and then one being not safe at all. We had the majority state that they were kind of at four, so while not like very, very safe, they do feel safe. So that was extremely reassuring to see. And I think that it's also important though to notice that some of the numbers like are lower and we can't ignore that. And we have to take those into account too. Next slide. Okay, yeah, so five, so I asked them, how safe do you feel attending school every day? Five is gonna be very safe and then one is gonna be not safe at all. So then three and four is gonna kind of be like the in between, like I feel safe, but I think more can be done to make me feel safe. Okay, so the next question I asked is, do you think Chatham has done an efficient, good job at preparing students for what to do in an emergency and/or possible threatening situation? So I think this is good to see, obvious, I mean, not good, but it could obviously use improvement. But the fact that the majority felt that we have done a good job preparing students is encouraging. And then no, they haven't done a good job, 45.2% of students said that. So while it's kind of split down in between, there's obviously more students that feel we have done a good job. But that kind of gets surprising as we look more deeply into the survey, but I'll get into that in a couple of minutes. Next slide. Okay, so then I asked them this question, during your time at Chatham, what has the school done to prepare you for emergency situations that put students at risk? And if they felt like that we haven't done anything, then they could have clarified that below. So I basically went through the survey with Dr. D'Angelo and I highlighted some of the responses that stuck out to me the most. So in earlier years, I believe we did more, like lockdown drills and presentations from speakers, but we haven't done much in the year since COVID. I think we should do more. These are direct quotes, by the way, so just wanted to put a disclaimer if there's any misspelling. So then we also, they do recognize that we do persistent fire drills, lockdown drills, et cetera. The avoid, defend, deny, the avoid, deny, defend assemblies, lockdowns, fire drills. That assembly was the one I spoke about before, which we had our freshman year. And this one I found interesting, they don't do active shooter drills or tornado drills. I know they aren't common, but they still happen enough that we should do it. So there's more concerns in terms of like weather drills. Lockdown drills and fire drills, I think we need to practice these more. They just don't do enough to repair us. And then this one is pretty notable. No, I do not, we do a million fire drills a year, but yet we barely do any school shooting or lockdown or lockout drills or others like that. And when we do, the teacher just talks and tells us what could happen and what we should do. Nothing about this prepares anyone for anything. With everything going on in the world and all the school shooting recently, we should be doing more. So then I want to move on to this bolded one. So the information they provide is always misleading or miscommunicated with other teachers. This was obviously highlighted because we had a lockout. I'm pretty sure it was last week we had it and the miscommunication unfortunately kind of caused the lockout to maybe not be handled in the best way possible. And it kind of just goes to show that there needs to be more discussions surrounding this where everyone is on the same page, getting the same information about safety. So yeah, that just goes to show that like we need to be doing more for this. So and then last one, a brief explanation of fire drills and a few minutes spent on how to position slash what to do during an active shooter or other school threats. Not enough information or explanation was given to actually prepare me for a school threat. Obviously, these are just a few of all the things that, all the responses that I've got. Some did say that we do do enough, but I didn't highlight them. But the majority of students did say that we didn't do enough, which is kind of interesting because if we go look back at that first chart where students said that we are doing enough to prepare them, it says that more students think we're doing enough than we're not doing enough. And Dr. D'Angelo and I kind of talked about these numbers and then looking at the responses and comparing them. And we came to the conclusion that it may be because COVID, we're just sitting there and talking through them and not actively getting up and physically doing them. So that can be less effective in terms of like learning and feeling like you're actually doing something. Go on to the next slide. So then I asked the students if they have any ideas of what more the school can do to help prepare students. And I just wanted to make a note concerning the data, 47 responses compared to the 62 that initially took the survey. So there may be some, there was obviously like less responses to react to. So more lockdown drills and maybe like more presentations and more awareness, more practice, more drills. I really like this fourth bullet right here, in gym class, we should have a unit on self-defense this way in case of an intruder or bad person that comes into our school. We can learn how to protect yourself if needed. And this can also be used outside of the school setting. I know that many of us are gonna be going out into the world someday, I mean, all of us will be. So I think that's really helpful on like a college setting or, you know, just walking down the street anywhere. I feel like a lot of the kids don't know the building very well. We also haven't done a lockdown drill in a while. We should still be doing lockdown drills and talk about what we would do if something were to happen. We have done like no lockdown drills this year, so more of those, less fire drill. Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm just quoting. Yeah, no, yeah, sorry, I'm just quoting them. No, 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 it's okay, no worries. So. Okay, so. A lot of, okay, yeah, so less, less fire drills, but we obviously have to like do a state mandatory fire drills. So some kids also said not in particular. And then some kids also suggested getting another school resource officer. They actually mentioned that we clone Deputy Van Alstine, but I don't think that's possible just yet. So talk more about lockdown drills, a class or session that talks about and goes more in depth about what to do in an emergency situation. And teach more about how to act and exits different events and prepare more. And assemblies, packets, videos, and holding a few short training sessions, et cetera. So now we can talk about what we should do from here. So taking into account some of the students' responses, we've thought of possible self-defense or safety training in classes. These classes in gym, as I could be like taught in gym, and as I've said before, they would also be helpful outside of the school setting. Since we do want to prepare our children for the future and leaving school. And then familiarize students on the safety cards each teacher has, possible replacement of them in the classroom, so they're more up to date. And the location of cards on the wall and so like, we want to make sure that the location cards are accessible to everyone. But we were also kind of having the discussion like if it's a breach in like privacy and security, if they're kind of accessible for anyone to see. Because then people know our security plans and our security details. But these are basically the cards that every single room has, that has what to do to hold in shelter, no, hold in place, lockdown, lockout, all those safety procedures. So just updating those and making sure that everyone is on the same page when it comes to them.
Where are those cards? In the teacher's desk, the teacher has them?
So yeah, every single classroom has them, but the teacher can decide where to put it. They also, some of them have emergency folders where only they can see it. Some of them also have it on their desks or on the wall. And then annually scheduled student safety assemblies to go over school protocols and strategies that can be shared with students and questions can be answered. So everyone is on the same page. We did have this freshman year, we, the majority of students I've talked to believe that it was extremely beneficial. Having conversations with students about how to act in realistic situations such as moving furniture in the class and talking through what to do. Mr. Thorson did do this in one of my, the senior teacher's classes. And from everyone I've talked to, like in that class, they really enjoyed like having that conversation and just kind of like figure, talking through what to do. Because obviously it's just traumatic thing to talk about. So I think that students, you know, having these kind of tough discussions, it helps them kind of feel like let more at ease with a really difficult conversation. And then ensure, ensuring that see something, say something is understood by all. I feel as if we're on the same page with that and students and teachers also actually understand that. Then there can be more precautionary preventative steps instead of reactionary things. And then investigate ways we can provide information on students at the beginning, to students at the beginning of the school year. So like instead of handing out packets, because let's be realistic, students will probably just throw those out or, you know, they'll end up somewhere in the hallway. Maybe put out information on Google Classroom that has the same safety procedure. So everyone is reading and looking at the same thing and familiarized with it. So these are just a few ideas that we came up with and we believe that would be beneficial. And then moving on. Yeah.
This may have been the older version. The next slide says questions and answers.
Questions, comments, or concerns. Cause I know I just kind of threw a lot out at you, so if you have any questions.
Before we do board questions, do we want to do a management response?
Yeah, I would like to, just first of all, a shout out to Mia and the rest of the student government. This took some tremendous time and effort on her part and she's done a phenomenal job in not only creating the survey with her. And I don't know if you have any, a shout out to any of the other participants, but in creating the survey and analyzing the results and meeting with myself. And then this week we had an opportunity to meet with high school administration, myself, Lauren Montgomery, the advisor. And Mr. Loomis who's going to be taking over during her maternity leave and we had a great conversation. There are some large themes that emerged through this, some that are very helpful. I guess the couple of comments that I have is that what's different and Mia's already made a reference to it was that our protocols during COVID were very different than we had previous to COVID. The recommendation from our security consultant and others was that it would have been counterproductive to have followed the normal procedures in terms of lockdown drills during COVID when we were trying to keep people physically distanced and apart. So that we were then relegated to talking through the drills in the classrooms. And as Mia pointed out, that's not nearly as effective as getting people to be actively involved in what that looks like and to be able to debrief and talk about it. So I wanted to reassure everyone that these are some solid recommendations. And that as we move forward and hopefully return to more of a normal classroom setting in the spring and in the fall, we'll be able to get back to some of the more traditional types of trainings that we've had for students, including bringing them together in large assemblies and having some of the outside technical expertise in terms of school safety come in and share strategies with our students. Mia knows as a dad of two daughters, when the same bulleted item struck me in terms of self-defense and I quickly go to the fact that they're both on college campuses and I worry about them all the time. And that I think we could do and investigate, and I've talked to Mr. Thorson, it may not be in the form of a gym class, but in some other type of assembly or manner for which we could give our students better situational awareness and kind of self-defense strategies to get themselves out of some situations that they may find themselves in. I think that could be lifelong skills that would be beneficial to everyone involved. And in terms of just the most recent incident that we had where we called a lockout. That was the first time since I've been here that we've actually used that particular drill type. So although it, we erred on the side of extreme precaution to do that. We found that we didn't follow the procedures exactly as it should have. So we've since, like any other situation, we have debriefed and we've made some changes. And as a result of that, I wanted to make sure that everyone was comfortable with the fact that we're bringing in our security consultant, I believe on the 29th to just do a little refresher, because one of the things that we often forget is that we have turnover in staff, whether that's instructional staff in the classroom or in the offices. And we need to be doing some of these trainings on a regular basis to make sure that everybody is comfortable and knowledgeable about the protocols that need to be followed. So that's just a couple of my comments in terms of the survey and I do appreciate the student voice that's been represented here.
I have one quick question. Are we still on this six different emergency code model? Has that changed?
I don't, that's, I don't know how old that version is, but I will tell you that what we follow, no, that's, that's an old version that was printed, pre-printed on the back of those IDs. I haven't used that since I've been here. We follow the protocol that's prescribed by the New York State Safe Schools Organization. And it's a kind of a standard practice in terms of the drill, the drill types and the shelter types that are available. So the card that Mia referred to is something that we didn't create on our own. That is something that is downloaded through that organization from the state and we follow that. And it's also, that was a recommendation, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we did the security assessment. And out of that came some similar recommendations in that, at that point, our, that card was a little bit outdated. So we made sure that those were refreshed in all of our classrooms. But again, that was a couple of years ago. And although they haven't changed, we need to make sure that as year to year that they, that we're providing a sufficient supply of those and they're available and we know where they're available in the classrooms. And you know, unfortunately, lockout and lockdown are extremely two different responses that seem very similar in description, right? What we had a week ago, and I've shared that with the board, was a lockout, which simply means that we're reinforcing the idea that we're not allowing anybody in and we're asking our staff to make sure that windows and exterior doors are secure, but business as usual internally, as opposed to a lockdown, which is a much more serious protocol.
Anyone else on the board have questions?
I'd also like to, I'm trying to put you on the spot, but I know you were with a student situation the other day and Justin and I were at this meeting. So I don't know if you had any, you know, general overall comments.
Yeah, and we also appreciate the administration of Mr. Thorson, Mr. Forrest, like working with us too.
I just have some comments, I just wanted to also commend you and the others that took the time to, you know, help you put together this report if there were others. But also everyone that participated, you know, I think you're taking on a topic that is very difficult for you personally, or all the students personally to take on. It's the kind of thing that no one wants to really face and talk about because it's so difficult to even imagine. I think in this time of what we've been going through in the past couple of years, adding on top of that, this topic, you know, facing something that's very difficult to confront and think about is really commendable to everyone that's participated. And I understand why some students would choose not to participate, you know, it's understandable. Hopefully we can encourage, you know, if we continue these surveys, I would like to see this kind of survey done on a regular basis. Maybe it's not every year, but I think it's very helpful. I think it would be great to see, it's always good to hear the voices of the students, especially with something that affects you guys so personally. So I'm very happy that you guys took the time to do it. I think all the recommendations are very sound and I look forward to hearing more about, you know, how some things can be looked at. The consultant that's coming on the 29th, is that just to the administration or is that to the board?
That's to refresh the main offices and some of the new secretarial staff to make sure that they firmly understand the different, the different emergency types and how to call them out within the buildings.
Looks like no more, so I, thank you Mia.
Yeah.
Anything else for your report?
I just wanted to reiterate that all of these are quotes from the students and none of them are like my opinions or anything.
That's your disclaimer.
That's my disclaimer, I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you though.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move into the superintendent reports with Dr. D'Angelo.
Well, we have quite a list of things under the superintendent's report tonight, but I'm gonna make a few brief comments and then we'll quickly get to one of our presentations here that's gonna be much more visual and much more interesting than my comments. And we have quite a few students with us tonight, so we'll give them an opportunity to present and then rush on to do all their homework. So this week we, tomorrow evening between three and six, we're very hopeful that we're gonna cut our new transformer over at the high school. There will be, we just sent something out late this afternoon, but there'll be no after-school activities here at the high school because we're gonna have to take the power down again while we connect to the grid. We hope that, and we're cautiously optimistic that this is the final phase of this lengthy journey to getting reliable power. We, over the weekend, shut the building down so we could put new wiring in from the building to the transformer. That was the last leg, if you will, of older equipment and older wiring. So we should now be good from our service within the building right up to Nice Ex Pole with, with all brand new stuff between the December 2020 project and this most recent one. We'll be bringing you, we'll have a better idea after this week where we are with the project and with the cost. And Mike will be bringing some resolutions to the board at the next meeting. We remain vigilant with COVID. It's great to be talking about many other things other than COVID at our meetings, including all of the exciting academic things we have going on. But we are, we do remain vigilant with the new, with the new variant. And I'm happy to report that, you know, this week alone, we've only had one positive case within the district. So things have calmed down quite a bit. And although a few weeks ago, we lifted the mask, mask requirement, we're still maintaining all other COVID mitigation protocols in terms of distancing and cleaning and hygiene. So that's just a quick update on where we are with, with COVID. The, just a little bit to do with the budget vote, board elections coming up, some important dates. We'll start mentioning them more frequently. The budget vote is, will take place on Tuesday, May 17th from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the Mary Edardis Elementary Gymnasium. Candidate petitions for the Board of Education became available on Friday, the 18th. We've already had several people pick those up and those will continue to be available. In the district office, Debbie Hottenberg, our clerk, would be happy to assist you in gaining any of those petitions if you'd like. Candidates need to submit their petitions no later than 5:00 PM on Monday, April 18th. Just a reminder to be qualified for the Board of Education, must be able to read and write. You must be a qualified voter of the district, citizen of the United States, at least 18 years of old, 18 years of age or older and must be and have been a resident of the district for a continuous and uninterrupted period of at least one year. We will have four vacancies this year, two expiring seats and then two seats from, or three expiring seats and one from a recent resignation. Also voter registration dates, we usually have two each year, April 27th from 2:30 to 6:30 in the MED library. And then again, May 11th from four to eight, I'm sorry, in the MED lobby. And then again on May 11th from four to eight in lobby. And we'll make sure that we get those out to the public in terms of publicity on that. And to vote in the election, you just need to be a qualified voter, 18 years of age or older, US citizen, be a resident of the district for 30 days. And your name must appear either in our personal registration book or on the county board of election list in order to cast the vote. And that personal registration book is where I would imagine you can come and sign up when you come to those voter registration days, correct? Okay, so that's a little bit about the upcoming election. My last piece before I'm gonna turn it over to Sandy Fisher and the posse here, the robotics posse. I have some great news to share with you that our own Muriel Faxon, I know she's gonna be embarrassed by this, will be honored at this year's Spring 2020 Annual CASD, Friends of Education Celebration. I, I had wanted to get that to the board before this evening, but you'll have more information tomorrow. This is, this is something that recognizes those who have been committed to education in the capital region. CASD is the Capital Area School Development Association run through SUNY. those who have been committed to education in the capital region. CASDA is the Capital Area School Development Association run through SUNY Albany. And there will be an awards dinner on April 13th for which the board will receive more information. And we'll encourage those to attend. But Muriel has spent her entire, I don't know what you, your entire life in service to this community. And the director of CASDA, Mike Picarello, had called me and wanted to make sure that the information that we had submitted was correct because it's hard to believe that she's been involved for over 70 years in some of these initiatives. And I think she's touched so many people in the community and this is a well-deserving award that I know she's going to be very embarrassed to, and humble to receive. But well-deserved and more information about that will be coming. So congratulations, Muriel. And with that, Sandy. Where did Sandy go? Oh, there we go. Okay, I'm going to, give me a second. I'm going to bring her team's presentation up here.
Okay.
Actually, give me one more second.
All right. Well, while we're pulling that up, I'm going to introduce a couple of my team members here. I have Mason Levi, I have Jan Henchy, I have Jane Fisher, and then the other coach, Adam Fisher, is here with me tonight. It's Fisher Fanley. And yeah, we are so excited to be able to present the robot to all of you so you can see it in person and see some of what it can do. I just want to give a huge thank you to Dr. D'Angelo and Board of Education for supporting this program, for seeing the value of STEM in our schools and for, you know, taking this chance on us. Because it is a, it's a hefty, it's a hefty project, but it's, it's a lot of fun. So we, we, I guess, we have to recharge the pneumatic, so that's going to get noisy. You want to do that now? It's sort of in the middle. So it's good. Okay. It's not charged. You want to charge it? I'll charge it. Okay. So we were able to attend last week the Tech Valley Competition, which was held this year at the Times Union Center. It's the MVP Center. And we competed against 41 other teams. One came from Turkey, another came from Brazil, and the rest were from all over the the eastern states, New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Wisconsin, Indiana, West Virginia. And so we were up against a lot of stiff competition. So I'm going to have Jan call him up first. Have you got to, oh, and disclaimer here. Most of the pictures that you'll see here were taken by John Shea. He spent the three days with us at the competition and captured some really phenomenal pictures and put together a video that's at the end. So I'm going to have Jan come up and he's going to tell you about what the challenge was for this year. So Dr. D'Angelo, if you can go to the next slide.
Hello. So a competition that we had to do. I'm going to figure out. There we go. Well, so competition for this year was that we needed to find a robot or build a robot to, that could be able to shoot, pick up balls, large tennis balls, and be able to shoot them into a target basketball hoop kind of type style in the middle of the, in the middle of the field.
This one's eight feet eight inches tall, and then there was a lower one that was four feet.
And each was a different point value. Lower one was one point, upper one was two points. And one of the harder challenges that we need to figure out was the climbing aspect. As you see on the bot, we have two climbers.
Can you point to those?
Yep. So this, so the climber section here had four, four bars. The two lower bars, you could reach from the ground. And then there was a higher bar, or wait, was there? Four altogether. So then, so then the last two bars, you had to reach onto the second lower bar and then monkey bar climb, so traverse up to the higher bars.
The robot?
The robot. Yeah. We, we, we did, we could do that. We, we, we could just pull ourselves up to the second one. But you'll see some pictures where they actually could monkey bar climb up to the top one. It was impressive.
That's great.
The ours can get up to the high bar. Ours can only get to medium.
And then the picture on the right is just a picture of the field to give you sort of the scope and scale of this competition. You know, when you see the videos, if you don't get the sense that these, that these robots are very large. This robot weighs 102 pounds. You know, some of the robots weigh a little less, but they could weigh up to 150 pounds. So they're, they're hefty. They're, they're the real deal. I think that's it. Okay. You want, you want to say more? No?
These poor guys, part of the competition, they have judges come around talking to the teams. And both Mason and Jan are freshmen and they hadn't been to a competition before, so really didn't know what to expect. So they're, they're learning by trial by fire, I think is the phrase. So we'll go to the next slide, please. Okay, so that, that just shows you, that's our robot in competition. We can go to the next slide. Okay, so now I'm going to bring Mason up. And Dr. D'Angelo, if you can, we don't need sound, but Mason will sort of walk you through. We have a few videos here that show the process of how we got to this final design, just so you can see sort of the different stages that we went through.
Hello.
Do we do build, the build process first?
Yes. I'll commentate over it.
Okay, so.
You can full screen it if you'd like. Right. So for the robot, we start with a basic chassis, which is what you can see over there. It doesn't have the electronics attached and up yet, so we had to do that. It has three wheels on each side. And in order to turn left and right, only one side will turn on. So then from there, what we did is we built our quote-unquote jank bot. All right. Our quote-unquote jank bot, which was our prototype, and we made it out of cheaper materials like wood and whatever we could find lying around. And originally, we had like a different type of, a whole different bot. And so from there, we kind of came up with new ideas since the first one didn't work so well. And we changed the shooter on the top.
So wood is a lot cheaper than aluminum and polycarbonate. So we built it out of wood and cardboard just to get the initial design. And then from there, we can design the final product.
It's also nice because when it was cheap materials, we could just quickly move it all around in order to make like changes to make it function better.
And then the other video here that you can't see, we were able to utilize Mr. Caldwell's instruction class. And he finished building one of our field pieces for us in his class. We were in the gym. This was the weekend before competition. We were able to shoot the ball from 35 feet and go into the basket. So it is pretty impressive.
John, do you need a point guard for next year?
A large, oh, sorry. A large portion of the build process was also just fabricating all these things. Our main material is polycarbonate here. And so we have just giant sheets of it. And we had to cut them out and drill them all to size in order to.
I have a question just about the, you know, the design process. Was there like a, was there like a base plan design that you started from that you referenced to how to get started? Or how did, how did, like, just from the birth of it, how did, how did this come about?
Well, it kind of, all of the robots have the same kind of base mechanism where there's an intake on the front to pick up the balls, an index which will hold two balls, and then a shooter to shoot the balls and also the climbers. So we already had like all the basic components and we just need to figure out how to make them work together. So we didn't completely have an idea of what we were doing. Because as you can see with the jank bot, it was much different than what this looks like.
How many iterations did you guys go through?
Um, it's a good question.
Yeah. So, so the, the jank bot version, that was modeled after the challenge from 2019, which was similar. They had to pick up smaller balls and be able to shoot them and be able to, to, whoever made the spin and do some things. So just sort of that, that idea of how do you pick up a ball and how do you shoot it? We'd already sort of figured out that these were bigger balls and the target was much higher than before. So it was, so one of the videos that unfortunately I was adding to it after, after the fact was creating a shooter that we could angle to get the trajectory right. So then just figuring out motor speed and compression on the wheels, it was just trial and error. We just kept building with it until we got something that was consistently getting to target. And then we locked it in place. And then from that, we went to do this design. But we used Fusion 360 and Adventure to, to, put up designs, you know, in a computer simulation, printed those out, and then we used those templates on polycarbonate.
That's incredible. It's amazing.
Some schools, you know, with, with the higher resources have CNC routers that, you know, the computer will take the design and just automatically cut it out, add it to a moving up. And they have, you know, big engineers, SaaS engineers that are helping them with the design. And we're, we're, you know, it's on the ground, the trial and error. And this, this was, the kids did a lot. They, they made the belts for this, figured out the angles and distances, figured out the which wheels to use. These wheels all have different compressions. So we have lots of different colors with different compressions. So they had to trial all different wheels to push on smart for this.
Can I, can I ask about working with these materials? So I don't, I know aluminum's pretty common here. Has this program used the polycarbonate sheets for structural support before?
This was the first year of the program using the polycarbonate, but it worked really well. So we're probably going to continue to use that for the years. But this was my first year, but we did, they did not use polycarbonate beforehand.
There's a number of prototyping shops very close to school, but clearly, if you're able to iterate like in a lab and try out different, different sizes, different, different mechanisms quickly, like, that's very, very useful. Have you guys ever worked with outside prototyping shops for parts creation or?
Well, usually, usually we're, you know, three weeks behind schedule. So trying to come up with a plan and, and get it all
Too much of a cycle time?
In, in a short period of time has been, has been hard. But, but we're certainly.
But the fabrication, is that actually a limiting factor? Or is it the, the, the cycle time on planning and iterating?
Probably more so the planning, the planning and the prototyping and getting that, getting that done.
So this, this endeavor from start to finish was how long?
It started January 8th, I think that was a Saturday. And then we went to competition this last week.
And do you feel like it would benefit if you went even like started sooner or that?
Well, you can't unfortunately. They, they don't release the, the challenge until that first Saturday in January. So everybody's working the same, the same timeframe. And it just depends on which week your competition is. If you're, there's six weeks to competition. We were week two. So if, if we could go to competition, that was week six, then we'd have those extra weeks to work.
I have a question for Mason. So now that you've gone through it, you and your team, what would you do differently?
Well, next, we were thinking that with the, with like Fusion 360 and Inventor, next time, next year, we might model the whole robot ahead of time before making it. Because currently, we were just making individual pieces for it. So getting to plan the whole bot ahead of time would be very useful. Because it's easy when you can just see all the parts laid out for you. So that's definitely one thing we would do. Probably at first, I guess we weren't as devoted because we didn't realize how much time we had. So probably be going more frequently. Those are the main things, I'd say.
Yeah, we have an opportunity next fall. Ballston Spa has in the past done like a, sort of like a fall fest for local teams where they do a mini version of the competition. So our plan is to, to use that as a recruiting tool. But also, that would give us time the end of this year and this fall to maybe redo the climber so that we can try to get that traverse climb and then test it out at the, at the fall competition. All right. Well, let's do a demonstration. You know, we, that they asked us that at competition. We had jank bot, but we just never, never got around to naming this, I don't think. No.
It's the Faxon.
Yes, it's the Muriel Faxon.
I think we put it in the next slide. That just has some pictures of competition. We put it in the next slide. These are just some of the great pictures that, that.
So all the, all the bots are essentially the same?
Well, they're, they're the same.
A lot of alumnis and people who've been doing it a long time still really are into it. So they'll do something called Robot in Three Days, where the engineers and college students and alums will get together. They have big shops and they'll throw together prototype ideas and then everybody sees those prototype ideas. So there is some, some similarity between the bots. But, but there's nothing, like, we had one bot, we thought about this early, but dismissed it. But one bot at the competition had two little catapults to toss the ball. So I mean, there's no, the only requirements is weight, you have to be under 150 pounds. The outer dimension had to be 120 inches. And you had to start within that frame. And there's a limit on height too.
Within that frame?
Yep. Yep. You couldn't, couldn't be over the bumpers to start with.
Alrighty, so we're going to try to do a little demonstration here. Got to get the clamps off the climber.
Aim right for the screen, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So we're going to put Jane in front there. Hopefully she can catch the ball.
Have you tried it on the basketball court?
Yeah, yeah, that's where we could make the 35-foot shots. Maybe we should back it up a little bit just so we're not so close.
And it is, it is pretty, they're making this box.
Try a lot.
Dodgeball.
Wow.
So that's our soft toss.
So what's generating the velocity? It's the, it's just the speed of the belt? What's generating the velocity, the speed of the belt or what's?
Well, the speed of the wheels and the, yeah, how fast it's speeding it in. Uh, well, the, the speed of the wheels and the, yeah, how fast it's speeding it. Yeah, it's, it's, we're, uh, it's, we're, so that will, you know, equals, well, it's, it's, I think, we're, it's. Uh, you can see in fact that we have a camera on the front so that we, because we're standing on one side of the arena. So if we wanted to be on the other side of the field, we'd have a camera that's the, or the box. But, uh, they show us.
And then for the climbing, which we don't have the, the things here, they can just show you, um, what that, what that looks like. So yeah, so as they would come up onto the bar, clamp onto the bar and then as it would winch, winch it down, which would then pull the robot up.
I like the flashing light.
It's interwired.
Oh, it is.
Yeah. I have a question. Well, all the pictures were about their most key. They have this whole. Well, that would be my son. He was on Dog Baby. So the last slide, oh, um, yeah, so Jill shit tips online. Uh, this is, this is a shout out to Jill. Monday, the 14th was pie day.
Uh, 3:14 was pie day, so, so we did have pie on pie day, uh, to celebrate pie. And then the last one, this is a video that John Shea put together. That just captures a lot of the essence of, of the competition. And, you know, as you watch the video, you can just see the stands are filled. Some, some teams have, you know, 100 kids there. Um, and then certainly, you know, the, the teams from all over. And, um, you know, what I, I think I've mentioned this at, at other meetings. What you see here is that in, in the competition, there were, there were two alliances. Uh, this is set up for blue. We also have red bumpers. So there are three teams competing as an alliance. So working cooperatively, uh, to try to do better than the other alliance. And so it was randomly generated who you would be paired up with each match. So you could be, you know, in an alliance or working with one team, one match, and then you'd be against them in another match. So the whole idea, uh, you know, is, is to, to bring about this. They call it co-opertition. So this idea of you're, you're competing, but yet you're also cooperating. And, and when you have teams, you know, if, if a robot's broken or struggling and they're on your alliance, you're, you're in their pits helping them fix it before your match. Um, so this, you know, just this idea that, you know, yeah, we want to, we want to win, but at the same time, we want to bring everybody up with us as well, which is, which is pretty awesome. And so, uh, we'll leave you with this video and thank you.
There, there's no voiceover, there's just music. So, um, you know, the sounds aren't kind of great over the speakers, but you can still see the video.
So you have to make a certain amount or are you trying to make a certain amount within a certain amount of time?
So the first 15 seconds is what they call economists and that's when the robot's moving strictly on computer code. Uh, so our robot would a certain distance and then it would shoot a ball into the basket that was reloaded. And then the two minutes and 45 seconds was your repeating. So you're trying to get, you know, as many balls in the, the hubs as you could. And then you can see this, this robot here is doing the traverse climb. So you can see, you know, swinging and then grabbing and letting go. Yep, wide and good at that point, they go to that.
Are you allowed to like aggressively go after the other robot?
So part of it is, you know, uh, offense and defense. Uh, it's, it's not, you know, like shooting lasers or, you know, razor blades at the side. Uh, but certainly defensive maneuvers to, to try to get the other team to not be as successful. I'd also like to thank Mike and Dr. D'Angelo and John for putting up with my craziness the two weeks before competition. Getting us in the building during snowstorms and everything else so that we could, that we could work as much as possible. I appreciate that. That's the Brazilian team. That team's from Ballston Spa. So each team would have a 10 foot square area. That's the pit, sort of like race cars have pits. Um, and that's where you would keep your robot or keep your tools and things like that. Bring it back to be able to work on it in between matches. That's it.
Thank you.
Well, I don't remember getting video last time around, so that, that was fun.
Any other questions for us?
Josh wants to know, can I drive a bus?
Need a small bus.
Go fund me or any of the sponsors to help out or?
Uh, we certainly would love sponsors. Um, I just saw an email they're upping the competition fee next year. And we'd like to do two competitions next year. Cause one and done, you get up there, you finally get your groove and then it's over. If you do two competitions, the first competition is really the practice. And then the second one is where you really go and.
Thank you. Uh, if we don't have any other questions, we'll move on. So this is destined for the John Carrot now?
Um, not for a while. We're gonna take it to competition and ball and then I'm sure we're gonna have to.
Recycle some motors.
We're gonna have to dismantle it.
Are you gonna do a round with the middle school or?
We are, we are. Um, I, I want to take it up to the Arbor Day Fair Festival, um, this spring. And, uh, also talking about trying to get it at the, at the county fair, um, at the school, yes, setup that they have. Trying to get some sponsorships or something. Okay, yeah, it's usually, are we November and then October? Oh, great, okay. Thank you.
Okay. That was well worth it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we're still in your reports, so.
Yeah, we have a couple more, a couple more sections to go. This one will be fairly quick. Uh, I wanted to, um, just have a moment with the board in terms of a recommendation to create a, a new title. Um, as you know, Giles, um, who was our senior networking systems engineer left us several months ago. And, um, we have, uh, we took that time strategically to take a step back and, uh, do an assessment of what we think, uh, would best meet the district's needs. Under Dr. Root's leadership, um, we've been working collaboratively with the IT, um, department over at Questar and they've, and they've been providing us some resources over the last several months. Brian Kuhn, who, who was here and, and actually spoke and, and met the board, um, in the fall sometime, is still assisting us in that process. But we've, we've now come to the conclusion that, um, we would like to see what the, um, employment landscape looks like for bringing, uh, an employee back on, on staff. Although there were some, there are some advantages in terms of contracting with, um, Questar in terms of them having a deep bench and, and, and a variety of expertise that you can tap into. We feel there's a little something missing in terms of having someone being onsite all the time and working with the teachers and administrators, um, to advance our, our technology initiatives. And there were some gaps that we, we would certainly like to, um, address. So with that, what I'm asking, um, we've, we've done a little research. This is a, um, civil service job description, uh, very similar to what, um, Ichabod Crane had done, uh, this past year. It upgrades, um, the position from a solely kind of technical position to a combination, technical, administrative, um, with some instructional expectations as well. And, um, attached is the full description of the director of technology. We, um, in terms of, we're kind of in the middle of budget season and I wouldn't bring anything to you that would have, um, major budget impact. In terms of, um, budgeting, um, our senior systems network engineer, having been here for 13 years, was appropriately compensated. And this new job, um, range would be right in line with what we were previously, um, compensating the senior network systems engineer, um, within, you know, a relatively, um, small, um, increase. So I wanted to just to, um, put that out there for you. I'm looking, um, to see if you have any questions and, um, recommendation to support it. And the consensus agenda would establish this position so we can then go out and post it and see what it looks like. We, um, we know that the competitive landscape out there, it's a competitive landscape out there. And, um, we're looking for someone who may be a little earlier in their career and looking to come someplace that they'd have some, um, flexibility and support and be able to grow with us and help us advance our, um, all of our technology initiatives, including our, you know, our cybersecurity work, our, um, work with our student information systems and a variety of other, um, uh, IT related, uh, initiatives that we, we need, that need attention here in Chatham. So I don't know if anybody had any questions, concerns at this point.
I'm curious if, uh, Questar's currently on fractional resource or block hours? Like, how do you, how does that work? Would we, and we, would we still have access to that?
Um, I'll take a crack at that and then Lisa, please. So, um, you know, Questar is always available to us. I, I think what you're thinking now is like, no matter who we might get as a director, um, in, in the IT industry, that, you know, the skillset is so varied that sometimes you still need expertise of a tier two or tier three engineer. And we still could make, um, you know, it still would be accessible to us at Questar. I think right now they're doing one day a week in, in-house. Yeah, why don't you, if you refresh our memory on, um.
Yeah, so they're doing one day a week with, um, the main leadership support, but then we have several days with help desk tech. And there's also work that's happening that's not onsite. The thing that I just want to add to this is that, uh, I just want to emphasize that Questar has been tremendous in supporting us. We've been very satisfied with, um, the work that they've done for us. We just, we just need a little bit more and we want to, it's not to say that we could canvas and we may not. I'm hopeful that we, that we have some exceptional candidates, but the work with Questar right now is really good. And we always have the option to continue, but we, we feel like it's important to, um, have a person in district.
And you know what, and just a shout out to Trish and Harris who's still behind me who, you know, they're, they're boots on the ground every day. They do a tremendous job and, uh, we just think having someone, uh, internal, um, supporting their efforts, um, would, would be of an advantage. The timing on this is such that we need to figure out whether there is that person out there because at some point, uh, very soon, uh, Questar understandably is going to need to know whether we're going to commit to them for another year so they can build out their, their staff resources. So this, um, I, I know this is coming kind of, uh, quickly to you, um, but it's because we need to figure out whether going down this path is going to be feasible for this year and we can find someone that would be of interest to us. And if not, then of course the backup plan is to recommit to Questar and perhaps have to do that for another year, um, because of their, their billing cycle.
I just have a question about, um, if, if there's any link at all to like the curriculum side of technology and how that would.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, um, Chris, that's a good point. Lisa and I talk about that all the time in principals. Um, that's not necessarily, um, the advantage, the service with Questar. It's more of a technical perspective. And, um, we, you know, there's, uh, an opportunity here for having our own person provide, uh, internal training and get closer to the instructional program and to be able to better support our teachers and our administrators in that effort as well. Uh, we also, if you, if you recall, we still have some smart school money left over. We've been waiting on that so that we could strategically spend that, um, at an appropriate time when we knew exactly what we'd need in our classrooms. That individual would be responsible with, with Dr. Root to figure that out, um, as well as our continued efforts in terms of, um, cybersecurity and our, uh, compliance with Ed Law 2D as well.
Resume is in by April 8th. One, would you hope this, this person could be in board if the right person comes along?
Probably sometime end of May, early June.
Okay. I was wondering if it was going to be this year. Yeah, okay.
But no later than July 1st.
Okay.
We're committed to Questar till the end of June, correct? Yeah. Um, I'm, I'm a big fan of, um, transition. And also if we were able to bring someone in and they could work collaboratively with the Questar folks, helping them transition so that we'd be able to hit the ground running. I'm sure we have a, a number of initiatives planned for this summer. You know, uh, thanks to Harrison, his leadership. We're moving forward with some of the, um, cameras that we had, um, purchased several years ago that still needed to be installed. Though they're working on that. We're working on our, um, E-Rate program to upgrade our wireless, um, equipment. And, um, so we've got, you know, quite a bit, uh, ahead of us.
So the, um, the qualifications here, and I know that this is your canvassing. The management or the leadership experience is listed separately from the technical experience. Do you imagine that those are, uh, concurrent or are, you're looking for like what level of overall, uh, seniority? Like, is this, is this like someone that's like 10 years into their IT career or?
Ideally, um, it'll, some of that will be, um, qualification and what we can afford. If I could find someone who's five to 10 years, I would be, um, I would think no less than five in the industry. 10 would be ideal, uh, and, and especially if it's, some of that is in a school setting.
Um, I, I think this is a great idea to, um, to reformulate the, uh, position. This is for the rest of the board, although I'd like to preface that by saying, um, the labor market is challenging. It's not just if there's heads available, right? It's if it's the right head.
Well, that's, that's a good point. We had that discussion today in admin. We're not going to hire for the sake of hiring. We're looking for the right person. I'd rather, um, if we can't find them, we'll admittedly take a step back and, um, I think patience is going to be important here. What we're hoping to find is someone who's up and coming, perhaps, uh, already working for a school district, but needs, is looking for an opportunity to demonstrate their leadership and grow and have an opportunity to come to an organization where they can make a difference. They may be in a larger organization where, um, they're playing a role, but they're, they're not playing a decision-making role. And this would be, uh, coming to us, you know, to a, a little smaller district where they would have a much greater impact, um, on what they do. And that's kind of what we're, we're looking for.
And so this is, I see it's civil service provisional, so they don't need to be current civil.
Right. So a couple of things in that regard. We did inquire, there is no existing list. The test, I think, is scheduled for June, if I'm recalling that correctly. And because of that, we can hire provisionally. The other added benefit, if you will, in working with civil service and having conversations, when Ichabod Crane went through this, they found it extremely difficult to find, necessarily find somebody in Columbia County. So civil service has allowed us to be able to make this available to candidates outside of the county. So sometimes when you take a civil service test, you have to be a resident of the county to realize that that pool could be small. And so we don't have to narrow our pool just to Columbia County.
What about, let's presume that the catch of candidates is not timely enough or perfect enough, and you're in June? Would you, do you have the ability to extend that hiring period, or you're, you're, you're locking in Questar for the season at that point?
Mike, when do we have to make a commitment? May 1st.
So this, this has to happen?
Yeah, we can probably, I mean, I don't want to, sometimes there's a, maybe, maybe a week or two leadway there if you're in the middle of a decision, but pretty much in fairness to them, they're trying to build their annual budgets and come to the, their annual meeting with a budget for approval, and they need to know these kinds of things.
So I don't even know that we could have, it's too bad we didn't do this like a month ago, right? Does anyone have any thoughts here? Because I, I'm in support of this. Okay.
Okay. Now on to the last portion of the superintendent's report, and I'm for that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Chuddy for the next phase in part three of his budget presentation tonight. We're going to be hearing from Josh in transportation and a little bit about benefits and special education. I think I see Brian over there. Brian's worked with Mike on, on this as well. So provide me a moment to switch over, and we will get you his presentation momentarily here.
Second here. Okay, Michael, it's all yours.
All right. So continuing our budget process, we're in the third part, so this really is the summing up everything on the budget side as of now. The next finance meeting and next board meeting, we're going to look to actually adopt the budget on April 5th. There's really health insurance. I'm waiting on those numbers, on a couple of other adjustments, and then we'll bring that and the tax levy recommendation at that meeting. But for this meeting, I'll go through the third part. I'll have our new Director of Transportation, Josh Loeffler, is going to go through his slides. I'll introduce him in a little bit. And Brian Simon, Director of Pupil Services, will go over a special education slide. I'll go through the benefits, debt service, the transfers. We talked about a few of them. And then also a capital reserve plan for the budget. For the next slide. All right. So I'll go through this, and then, as I stated, we'll go through the other pieces. So transportation, we have Josh discuss that in a little bit, but I'm going to go through just the high-level increase of $43,000. That really entails the contractual costs per contract of salaries. We did increase our fuel budget some. Typically with our fuel budget, when prices are lower, we don't drastically reduce the budget, and when they go up higher, we don't drastically increase. But Josh will discuss fuel, but we did increase that $8,000, which would accommodate current pricing. The other item that Josh will discuss a little bit, what he's done, came up some great ideas, is we increased our budget $5,000 for advertising and going out and trying to recruit drivers. It's a very difficult New York state and countrywide right now. Next line, ERS, TRS, so that's the Employee Retirement System benefits and Teacher Retirement System benefits. You can see an actual decrease of $74,380. What's happening there is employee retirement, ERS, is non-instructional staff. Those rates have dropped. And as we call, as I discussed, as we have six tiers, and there's six-tiered rates. So tier one being the oldest employees and tier six, the newest. And for, for example, tier four, where we have the most employees, that went from 18.1 to 13.1. So quite a significant drop throughout the tiers. The ERS costs dropped $173,000. On the flip side, the teacher retirement system, it's one rate. That went from 9.8 to 10.29 next year, so that increased slightly. That increase was about $100,000, so that's why you see a decrease of almost $74,000. If we go to the next slide, I'm just going to briefly show the, typically show this each year, I update where we've been. So this is the teacher retirement system rates. You can see the green number going up 10.29, a slight increase from 9.8. What they do is they look at the fund, and then they determine what rates they need in the future. So some years, when the stock market's great, you can look at the low, the 2000s, rates were under a percent. And then they base it on a five-year average, so it doesn't, you know, they try to control some of the fluctuation, but you can see after the crash in 2008, we actually went down a few years and then really had a major spike in 2015 to over 70%. We've been trending. I, I like the last few years, at least it's not major increases. We'll see where we are as, as of this year, you know, the stock market's been down, but it is a five-year average to try to minimize that impact. If we go back to the last slide. So then, Social Security TSA, you see an increase of $20,928. Social Security, 7.65% of the salaries. We had a few retirements, so that brought that down slightly. Tax shelter annuity is just a, we, a budget holder line of $2,500. What that is, is when teachers or different employees retire, we pay out on sick time, but we use a reserve to cover those costs, so we don't have a major increase on that. Health insurance dental is really the last remaining piece. I should be getting rates this week. This is on an estimate of 6% Blue Cross and 10% CDPHP rates going up, so you can see $248,973. But really, what we did is we did have a shift, as, you know, we settled all our contracts. Our new employees have been going into the 815 plan, which is more cost-effective for the district. And so, and when we had our new employees, some of them have taken the buyouts. So really, there was only about $48,000 of this was the increase for the health insurance for active employees. I added $200,000 to the retiree line. As I did last year, we used to budget about 1.1 million for retiree health, and that number, we kept that flat, but the number was growing each year. So last year, we went to 1.4 million, and right now, we're currently, I'm, to add 200,000 more, we'll be at 1.6 million. The actual cost of the retiree help is 1.775, so I've been continually trying to close that gap over the last couple of years. Next line's debt service. You can see $2,000 decrease, pretty much flat. Part of our goal was to have leveled debt service a few years ago, and we've achieved that. Those are our three remaining bonds. We did the refunding in 2019. We did the new bond for the new construction in 2019, and we have a 2012 bond. As I stated in Finance Committee, we still have our AA2 rating. We got that rating upgraded that in 2019, so that saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest costs over the years since we had a lower, lower debt. Transfer to library, we discussed last meeting with Jen, slight decrease. Transfer to special ed, and this is summer school special, special education costs. We're responsible 20%. We actually transfer this to a federal fund. Federal funds pay 80% of this. That's pretty much constant over the years. Transfer to food service, we spoke about last meeting, a slight decrease. Transfer to capital, increased $14,000. What that entails is the buses that Josh will discuss, we're getting two, two diesel buses, so that's $241,768. And that other $100,000 is that $100,000 capital project we're doing. We just, we did discuss in finance and capital, the meeting, that we're looking at doing an electronic sign-out front. I'm just getting more authorization on making sure that'll get done in a year, but that's kind of the project we're looking at right now. So total transportation benefits and transfers, 1.84% or $249,807. And if we go to the couple, couple more slides before I go to Josh, yep, I'll have Josh and Brian speak after. I just wanted to kind of keep going. Another one, another one, another one, another one. All right. So to sum up where we are now on, holistically on the budget, as I stated, we're just really waiting on health insurance and a couple other numbers to come in for our next meeting. Estimated expenditures going up 1.77% or $586,000 roughly. If you look at the revenues, which I'll have to go through more in detail next meeting, but based on using the 3.47 tax cap, we'd have a surplus now of $147,276. As I stated previously, that's the cap. That doesn't mean we're going at that number. So we'll have a lengthy discussion next meeting to bring a recommendation to the board on where the tax levy will be. That's the, that's what I have right now on this side. Any questions on that before I turn it over to our Director of Transportation and Special Education?
Well, we're about to talk about transportation and special ed, it's all safe.
Okay. Before I go there, one, one last slide. The last slide I want to talk about, and then I'll let them take the floor, is the capital reserve. So we're going out with a legal notice. This follows in our, our reserve plan, our recommendation in finance that I discussed is to do another capital reserve. We have our building condition survey was done. We have, you know, a significant amount of work. And what a capital reserve is, is voters have to prove that at the vote in May to, to fund them out that I recommend, I were recommending 5 million. Doesn't mean we're going to have the money to put in there, but if we have savings and surpluses, we would like to, you know, put money in this reserve. One of the benefits of this reserve in our, in our savings plan is that we can give this back to the taxpayer when we do a capital project. So for example, the last one, we did almost $10 million project. We had 5 million in reserves. We get 50% back from the state, so it was a tax-neutral project. There was no additional tax impact. So this is one way to give money back to the taxpayers, and, and we, we recommend that. You can look historically, we did 2008, 3.5, and we used that in the 2012 project. 15, we did 2 million, and then 17, we did 4.5 million more. So we used the 2 million in the last project, and we used 1.6 million of the 4.5 in the last project to make it tax-neutral. So right now, we have 3.4 million left in the 4.5 million reserve that we want to use for our next project. And then our recommendation's creating this $5 million reserve and then funding some of this.
What do you have left?
We have 3.4. So we're, we're trying to get at least a five or six or seven million. So the 5 million, once that's approved, you have 10 years to build that and use that. And as I stated, we, we definitely have capital work that needs to be done in the, in the near future. So that's what I have on those slides. If we can go to transportation. I will have, so Josh Loeffler is our new transportation supervisor. One thing I would like to say is, you know, I worked with Steve Alinek, you know, my 10 years here. You know, Steve did a great job, and I was, you know, I've been thrilled working with Josh. You know, he's come in, he's really learned the systems, he's really worked well with the staff out there. Challenging group at times, but really did a good job with our staff. And then what I really like is, you know, he's learning everything as, he's only, you know, he's been here a very short period of time, but he also has, as you'll see tonight, some excellent recommendations, really trying to look at ways to make things more efficient or cost-effective. So it's been great working with Josh, and, you know, I look forward to many years working with him, and I'll let him take the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So to, can everybody hear me okay?
If you can get a little closer to people online, I'll be able to hear you.
Absolutely. Okay, how about that?
That's great.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So as you can see for the budget, there's a slight increase for the upcoming year, as Mr. Chuddy had pointed out. And primarily, this is due to the rising cost of fuel. Basing it on the most, best way to put it, the most normal year that we have seen was going back to 2018, 2019, when the district went through approximately, they went through approximately $41,000 worth of gasoline for vehicles and $63,500 in diesel. That breaks down to a total of $2 per gallon average for gasoline and $2.35 on average for gas, for, for diesel. As of March 22nd, as we are all aware, there has been a drastic increase in fuel costs with all the events going on in the world. So that makes it a little, can be a little difficult at times when it comes to this. So that's why we, we have this little bit of an increase. Now, as of right now, we have gone through approximately almost $15,000, $15,000 gallons of gasoline for our vehicles, approximately $17,700 in diesel. Total cost right now, we're looking at 38, almost $39,000 for gasoline and almost $48,000 for diesel to date. This was effective today. Our average per gallon gasoline is $2.59, and for diesel, which is based off of 214, we haven't had a fill-up since then, is approximately $2.50. So comparing it on a normal year, hopefully we continue the trend that we're on right now with the events going on. We want to play it safe, especially with the amount of miles that our buses go through or any of our vehicles for the district, for that matter. So to continue on, as far as bus runs, I know, as far as routes go, our students within districts are no more than an hour on the runs. We're looking at, most cases, a average student is on a bus for approximately 30 to 45 minutes. Now, that is just within districts. Obviously, we have some out-of-district placement for a variety of reasons, and we're looking at 45 minutes at most, worst-case scenario, depending on a series of factors. We're looking at about an hour, 10, hour and 15, understanding that some of our programs are within a reasonable or pretty far away. That's actually pretty decent, seeing the recommendation is an hour and a half at most. It's, it's just a recommendation from the State Education Department. So we're doing our best to keep those numbers down, to ensure that everybody is, all our students make it to and from school within a decent time, decent manner. So to continue. Okay. So, apologies, I had to look over my notes again. My handwriting is horrible. So based on our budget, with the total number of students that are transported in the district, which is approximately 815 that we transport, that's both in-district, out-of-district, specialized programs, within the county, so on, so forth, we're looking at the amount per student that is transported, approximately $2,200 to transport a student within the district. Like I said, that's not just within district, that could be a Questar-based program, private parochial school, or a special education-based program within the area. That is currents.
That, that's per rider or per, per student in the district?
That is per student that rides a bus with, whether in-district or out-of-district. Now to continue on, a series of things that we have done within our department, as far as recruitment efforts, as far as ways to find more cost-effective avenues to take to ensure that we don't have money bleeding within the department. Number one, we've been advertising for drivers and attendants. We've had signs that have been posted. We have a sign in front of Chatham Hardware that we put up a few months back. We have a radio commercial through iHeart, iHeart Media, and that's actually been proven to be very effective. I, it's just today alone, I received two calls for interviewees. So one for an attendant and one to learn how to drive a bus. So between the combination of seeing the signs and listening to the radio, I think that's, the fact that we're starting to get phone calls, I think that's a great thing. We will also be, for a couple of weeks between the end of April, beginning of May, we will have two billboards, one on 203 and the other one on Route 66, to help with our advertising campaign. Because clearly, if we get the word out, more than likely, we'll have other people coming in, just to get the idea that, you know, we're hurting for drivers. They see it on the news, they hear it on the radio. I'm looking at all avenues here, because we're, it's going to come to a point where other districts are already starting to see it, where there are 10, 11, 12 drivers now. I do not want to see us get to that point. So I'd rather have a surplus of drivers, have them on the ready, instead of having too few. So with that being said, we have also made different strides to save, to take a more efficient approach when it comes to our 19A and SCD paperwork as far as our annual requirements. And one of them is through our annual DOT physicals. We actually have a company now that will come onsite and perform our physicals for a fraction of the price we were paying before. We are looking at saving a couple thousand dollars a year just for them to come in and do that. Now, with that being said... Now with that being said, they came in, uh, the company's called Access Compliance. They're based out of Albany. Uh, they're well adverse with, uh, 19A DOT physicals. They were actually onsite here last Wednesday. We had 27 of our drivers, including myself, who went through the process. Uh, and they were all successful. Uh, they were able to do it within five and a half hours. So if you break it down, it's approximately 10 to 15 minutes per physical. So they're, they have it down. It's more of a science now. So between the, the amount for the physical and the, uh, service charge for onsite, it is much more effective, much more cost, more cost effective than if we were to seek another source. So if we can go to the next slide, uh, slide please. So our bus purchases, as, uh, Mr. Chuddy had mentioned, uh, we are working on purchasing two large school buses. Initially, the plan was to have both of them gas powered engines. But we were notified, uh, about a month ago, a little over a month ago, that International or the IC Corporation is no longer making 66 passengers with the gas combustion engines. Simply because, as it was explained to us, the company that was making the components for it, they're primarily a propane based company. And all the components that they, that they were making, they were making a fraction of percent out of return. So therefore they discontinued it. But there is some way at the end of the tunnel with this. They're expecting by 2024, 2025, that Cummins, which is one of our primary, uh, engine producers, uh, they will be creating a gas powered engine and incorporating that back into the industry. So as of right now, we are sticking, we have, we have no choice but to stick with the, the supplied engines. Now with that being said, I know it's been past practice to, when we, when the district was to purchase buses, they would trade them in. Now it's, there's a series of factors. There are age, mileage. Uh, they're both considerable factors when it comes to this. But for these two buses that we are looking to, to sell, and I'll explain that momentarily. Uh, they have severe mechanical issues. One of them, uh, was actually on a bus run and it actually ended up swallowing a valve within the engine. And when you get to that point, that's thousands of dollars to replace the components. Taking it apart, having a dealer do it, do the work itself. It, it was just not, not cost effective. Uh, as far as the other bus that we are looking to, uh, to sell, uh, that also has an EGR base issue. Uh, it's the entire system, uh, EGR cooler, EGR valve system. Uh, that's also very pricey to replace as well. So we found the best avenue to take was to get rid of, to, uh, sell these this year and then move on with our plan, which I will go over momentarily. And as, uh, per the slide, uh, for every dollar spent on a bus, uh, the district receives approximately 32 cents back, uh, in aid from New York State. Uh, next slide please. Okay. So this bus replacement schedule. So I know there's, from what everybody is seeing, there are quite a few, uh, columns which have four vehicles on it, three vehicles. This is just a general overview. And if you'll notice in 22 and 23, and especially 20, and 23 and 24, there's, there's four of them there. This is because I am working on applying for a grant for the district. It's for a clean energy base grant, which the EPA offers on an annual basis. Uh, they've offered for the past few years. And what they do is they, they have certain requirements for a bus. It has to be of a certain age. You have to have a certain amount of miles on it within that timeframe. It has to be in service for a certain period of time. Luckily for Chatham, we have a bus that meets that requirement this year. And if you notice up on 22, 23, we, I have bus 184 and it has a star next to it. That's the bus that I am, that my goal is apply for the grant with this bus. And we could see anywhere from 10,000 up to 25, $35,000 for a bus, which would be, uh, which would be huge. So that's my goal for next year. If we can do that, then my thought is we could possibly go for another 66 passenger or look at other avenues for, uh, buses in terms of transportation. As far as 23, 24 goes, it's the same thing. We're looking at, I'm thinking 177 or 180 would be great candidates for this. Now with this grant, we can put in up to, I believe it's eight or nine buses if we choose to do so. But for now, I would like to start off with one, see where we're at, see, see if we're chosen for the grant because it is a lottery based. So all districts that put in for it, there's a chance they may be picked for it. It may not be. April Park, a few years ago, they put in for six buses and they received, I believe it was $60,000, $70,000 for all those buses. And, uh, one of the contractors in Columbia County, they put in for one and they received 20,000 for one. So it's, it's a lottery. It's a chance to gamble to an extent, but I think it would be worth it for the districts. Now finally, for this spreadsheet. This is the breakdown of extra vehicles. Over the past several months, I have looked at our inventory. I have seen what vehicles we use on a regular basis. Looking at the long term, uh, looking to see what programs we might be, uh, transporting to. And I came up with this list simply because the two, the list of these buses are the ones that are very limited in use. As of right now, we have a total of eight Suburbans. Eight Suburbans, uh, we have only been using two to transport throughout the entire year. And it's going to be the same thing for next year. And we also have two, seven, or three, seven passenger vans that we can use. They're more economical, so we can go farther distance and use less fuel than we would with a Suburban. Now I'm going to start at the top of the spreadsheet. We have bus 199 and 192. Bus 199 is a 2014 IC, 66 passenger and 192 is also a, I'm sorry, that's a 2012. I have my apologies with the, uh, the, the numbers on it. But that's also a 66 passenger. That is the one that had the valve issue and that is non-reparable. So that's the one that is, uh, not going to, uh, be usable. Now, I have done my research on this. I had a company that actually specializes in school buses, Don Brown Bus Sales. Uh, they are based out near Amsterdam. Now they have been in the pro, into the business of purchasing used buses from districts and contractors. And they take them and they pay top dollar for these trade-ins. Now 192, uh, going back to that bus, I've actually compared it to what Auctions International, what we could have done as an avenue to, uh, put it up for auction and see how much the district could get.
What year is 112? Bus 192, what year is that?
2012.
Bus 192?
Yes.
Yeah, it was a typo.
Yeah, my mistake on that. My apologies.
Okay.
So, so what I did was I compared it to, uh, past, uh, auctions. Comparing to buses, similar chassis, similar year, something similar in miles. Now what I did find was there was a 2012 on Auction International, which was the avenue that initially I thought we could take to, to get most of the revenue back from the most that we could. Uh, and comparing to this with one with approximately 92,000 miles on it and operating condition. The bid ended with just shy of $1,800 for the bus. So for a bus that has an issue, which is a critical issue within the engine, that's pretty, pretty substantial with what they offered us. Now also with the 2014 bus 199, if you notice it has 69,000 miles on it, it's almost 69.5. But that also has a major component, the EGR system, which could be thousands of dollars as I mentioned earlier, that would take to replace it and to fix it. Now this, something similar to this, 2014, uh, with 64,000 miles on it, so pretty close to the mileage uh, that we currently have on it. This went for $5,300 on Auction International. So the fact that they are offering us almost $9,300 for it, that's, that's pretty significant. Now in terms of the Suburbans, uh, 186, 191, 195, as you can tell, uh, from the spreadsheet, they are all 2012 or older. So, and the mileages are at least 100,000 plus. Now a couple of things to consider with this, warranties have run out, run out on these vehicles. Number one, so any type of work that we put into them, we have, the district has to pay for the parts to have them replaced. Number one. Number two, if they're not being used, we still have to go through DOT inspections every six months. So that's extra, not only is it, uh, extra equipment that is not being used, but to maintain it, just like any other vehicle not being used, having it go through DOT every six months. That's extra work on our mechanics. That is extra money that's going out for parts. And above all, it's an extra three vehicles that are going through DOT inspection every six months, which we could have other vehicles going through and have them done at a different time. So with that, finally, just to wrap things up with the, with the Suburbans. And it priced them out on Auctions International as well. And Queensberry School District, this is a prime example. They had a 2008 Suburban that went through auction with 182,000 miles on it. Uh, engine is pretty tired. Uh, they received 3,500, 3,550 for the final bid. So comparing, if you were to average these numbers, you're looking between, between four and $5,000 per Suburban. I mean, that's, to, again, I feel that's pretty, pretty decent and significant a price. So for vehicles that we are not using anymore, uh, that's, that's very excellent. That's excellent. In my professional opinion. And this would also give us more room at the garage. We still have five Suburbans. We have three vans and we still have adequate equipment to do what we need to do.
Those, uh, those comps, what time period were those from? They're pretty recent? The, the sale comparisons?
The sale comparisons? Yes, they are very recent, within the last month, month and a half. I actually have copies of them if anybody would be interested in looking at them, just to show you a breakdown of everything. Uh, I brought them with me just in case.
I, I'd like to revive the, uh, if, if nothing else, Ed, I want to revive the, the gasoline versus diesel conversation that precede you from like two years ago, maybe? And I know this is, this is going to keep coming up, I think, but diesel's under a lot of pressure right now. There's price alerts out there. Clearly, um, supply of diesel is going to continue to dwindle over the next 10 years. Sort of seems like it's being phased out, but we're buying these new diesel buses and I'm, I understand the, the supply issue this year. You said that International is promising gasoline model when?
Uh, at least 2024.
So that's like eight buses from now or something like that?
It could be.
It could be.
Very well could be. That was just a general, uh, estimate that our sales rep from Leonard Bus Sales gave to us.
Are there other major, um, school bus distributors available here in this area that have other manufacturers that?
Yes. Uh, we have, obviously we, we use Leonard Bus Sales. We use New York Bus Sales. Uh, they primarily, New York Bus Sales primarily deals with Bluebird, which are micro birds, our, uh, Bluebird, which is based out of Canada. Uh, we have, uh, one TransTech, which is also a Leonard bus, uh, uh, product that they sell. Uh, those are primarily, primarily.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm imagining this year gasoline buses are probably impossible to find, even if by any manufacturer. I heard a specific Root News report on this issue where everyone is, is chasing those gas buses right now because diesel prices are through the roof. Um, but I, I am concerned about, uh, I guess being strategic about like the next few years. I wouldn't want to just wait because one bus distributor says that they're going to have gas some years from now.
Yeah, I agree. I guess I, I want to follow up on that question. Are there, there are, there are no gas buses on state contract, correct?
From what I understand for International, no. We primarily use International, uh, for our 66 passenger, simply, uh, because of the Cummins engine, they're very reliable. Plus the warranty is, uh, they just increased the warranty to 10 years on the, on the engines. So that's one of the reasons why we stuck with International this year. Although it is a diesel, the warranty is far from what, from what we have seen, is, is one of the best that is offered.
So yeah, we're, we're going to, we will evaluate that, uh, the next, next for next year. I do want to look at the other providers.
Yeah, and it's, it's not simple because there are disadvantages to gas, particularly around reliability, right? So.
Absolutely. And there is, I mean, we have their, Bluebird does make a 66 passenger. They do make a 65 passenger. Uh, but they're, they're diesel engines. Uh, I'm not very familiar with them, just, just to be quite honest. I'm very familiar with International. Uh, same thing with our mechanics as well. So, uh, when it comes to Bluebird, uh, we will, a representative, uh, comes down every so often and they bring a demo just to show us what, what could be coming down the pipe. Uh, Bluebird has been discussing electric, uh, bringing an electric bus in. Uh, that's going to be like a 30 passenger bus, but the cost is just going to be unbelievable. It's going to be $500,000.
Uh, we'll wait for the feds to help us out on that one, I think.
Yeah.
But, but that will be evaluated for the future purchases.
Uh, what about, um, so we've, we've had like this fuel tank replacement on like the, the wishlist for a couple of years. Are we reassessing or we're not? Like, we're going through like the evaluation cycle right now, but do we, would, would we not want to reduce, um, our diesel capacity then? I don't, we're, we're talking about swapping tanks, right?
We just wanted to increase the gasoline capacity.
We weren't going to decrease diesel. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. I thought maybe there was going to be a replacement tank.
So that's still in discussions.
Yeah. Well, you know, we, we in facilities are talking about that. I don't know, like, we're going to be pulling the diesel tanks out from under you without you. Once it's budgeted.
We're still looking, we're still looking at that though. That is something we're looking at.
Okay. I, I don't have any other questions. Um, thank you for the, uh, the ridership numbers. Um, I, that was helpful.
I have a question just about the magic number 66. What's, what's magical about 66? I, I don't know. I have known, you know, I don't know anything about buses, but the, 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 the number 66, do buses come in different sizes around 66 or what's the 66?
Well, that's a good question, uh, because for your larger buses, you have 65, 66, and sometimes up to 70 passenger, 71 passenger. It's all about adding the extra seat. If you were to look at a 65 passenger bus, that's made by International Corporation. If you were to look at some districts, you look straight down the back of the bus, you're looking at the driver's side. You notice there's a smaller seat on that side. That's set for two students. They insert it up for two suits where with our buses, all of our seats are the same. So we get that extra student that can ride the bus. So that's why they, the district has gone for 66 passenger, 66 children, 44 adult, uh, compared to the 65 passenger, 43 adult.
Do we keep stats on how, um, how much a bus is filled in, in a, in a day or a month or a, meaning, you know, of the number of buses we have that are 66, how well are we actually filling up these buses on a daily basis?
Well, we do have a program that we can actually check to see when a bus is filled up on a regular basis. Now there's a variety of factors when it comes to that. Number one is the distance. Uh, obviously with our ratio of diesel to gas powered engines, the capacity, uh, where the buses go. Uh, there's a variety of factors, but that is something that we can extract as far as information goes.
It would be interesting to see, you know, are we, are we filling them 80% in general, 95%, you know, 40%?
I think what he's asking is daily ridership.
Daily ridership. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Oh, as far, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about fuel. My apologies.
Oh, no, no. Yeah, ridership.
As far as ridership, yes, uh, with the program that we have, uh, we are able to see who rides on a regular basis and who does not. Now, when it comes to the ridership, it's, there are some students that are routed to take a bus, although they may not take a bus for months. And then one day, parents call up, oh, little Susie needs to take the bus this afternoon, they need it right through Route thirteen. It's something that happens, but we route every student that uh, is eligible to take a bus. We route them on the appropriate bus for the appropriate route.
Where we mitigate some of that efficiency is in alternate requests. So the example is, and I understand, it's always frustrating when people uh, in any community see an empty bus go by, or a bus go by with six kids on it, it's a sixty-six passenger. Uh, but to Josh's point, by law, we have to make sure that we route for every eligible student, because then on any, on any given day, that person could show up or not show up, right? So how we mitigate that a bit is by, once the ridership or the average ridership is established in a school year, that's when Debbie receives a, a, a large number of alternate requests, where um, we may have a bus that's, that's full or close to capacity, um, and if we're able to drop someone off at an alternative daycare facility or another house, that's when, that's how we kind of mitigate um, a capacity to some extent, but I don't know if it's a kind of a crack at that answer.
It, it's, it's also a substantial issue, right, that we, kids are, you know, parents drive their kids even though they have a bus route, right, like, and this is, it's just, it's just part of the transportation system.
Yeah.
Especially if we have an instance, let's, let's use COVID as a prime example. When it comes to routing students, obviously, if they meet the criteria, then we put them on the bus. We route them so they're picked up and dropped off at their appropriate location. But let's say that they, uh, they don't, parents bring them in because they're worried about something of that nature. We don't know about that. Unless the driver mentions something. Most of the time, it's difficult to track, especially those who are, who uh, who stagger their time on the bus. It might be on one day a week, it might be on no days a week, and they're on two months from now. So it makes it very difficult.
Josh, thank you very much, really appreciate that, very comprehensive.
I don't have any other questions, you guys. All right, thank you. Thank you.
While we're um, switching personnel here, I'll, I will mention another shout out to Josh. Um, you know, an ongoing um, challenge that we've had, and we've had discussion here in the board before, is getting our students to some of the very wonderful Questar programs that are out there, whether it's um, you know, not, not just the um, the um, facility in, in Hudson, but down to Durham or um, Rensselaer, or to the new programs at Hudson Valley Community College or SUNY campus, and just this past month or so, we convened a committee, um, Dr. Rude, our, our counselors, um, to see if we could reexamine some of those opportunities, um, because transportation has been a huge barrier for participation for some of our students, and Josh did an amazing job. He contacted the other local districts, uh, he contacted the programs, we aligned start and end times. We took a look at uh, where people were going from other districts, and I'm happy to report, and it's um, a little early to know if there's any students who will take advantage of this, because Jim and Amanda are guidance counselors here at the high school, are working on it. But we um, we believe that we're able to now um, be able to transport students to uh, the two new, or two relatively new programs, one very new one within the last few years over at the Rensselaer Ed Tech Center, which is Questar's other facility that sits behind Hudson Valley. Um, they have revamped their IT program, it's now a gaming program. Uh, and they also have a heavy equipment program there, like, was very attractive to us in Carroll Durham, which we have not been able to find a feasible way of getting our students to and from. So that's one, and then also the P-Tech High School and the early college high school programs, it's, that uh, Questar is now running at Hudson Valley, we now have figured out a way to get students through a collaboration with Ichabod um, and the New Visions Bus, I believe, and a fact that we, we already transport a special education student to a location in Troy, so um, Josh has spent a lot of time over the last month trying to figure out how we get our students to uh, even better, I just didn't say better, even newer opportunities than we have in the past.
All right, well, you can look forward to questions about um, I was thinking the P-Tech slots.
Yes.
Um, specifically, that's a whole nother conversation, but uh, you got answers, right? This is, this is the, the early admissions college?
There's two programs over there, there's the STEM High School and then the early college program.
Yeah.
Yeah. We currently have one student um, attending Hudson Valley, I believe, John, but that, she transports herself. Yeah, and so that's always, and, and you should know right off the bat, my philosophical belief is if we're providing access to programs for our students, then we have an obligation to be able to get them there. It should be based on who can and who can't.
We didn't discuss that for this budget year because we, transportation was not even, wasn't even on the, the table.
So with that, I don't want to make the name even longer, but we'll have, turn it back over to Mike to.
Yeah, so Director of People's Services, uh, Brian Simon's going to discuss the special ed budget, um, I'll let him take it over.
So much of the special education budget is managing the continuum of services for our students. We currently have approximately a hundred and sixty-five students with special education needs. Uh, the types of services that we provide for them can vary greatly. Some students may just be receiving a push-in service with a special education teacher, occupational therapist pushing directly into the class to support students. Uh, then we have our co-teaching models, direct consultant teacher model for students, pull-out resource room, special class reading services, and then next year, we're also going to continue to maintain our four special class settings within the district, two at MED, our life skills classroom at the middle school, and our life skills classroom at the high school to meet those needs. In addition to our special education teachers here, we have two full-time speech and language pathologists. Uh, that's been a sharp level of need increase we've been seeing uh, in district, our students with speech and language needs. And meeting those needs for the students, uh, some of it very much, well, you know, could be COVID-related. Young students wearing masks uh, certainly hasn't helped, uh, the speech and language pathologists are ecstatic that they can actually, the students can actually see the way they uh, shape their mouths for certain sounds, makes a big difference, like a TH sound, for once, you can really, you know, visualize, it really helps the students greatly. Uh, but we also have seen increase of academic needs across the board and speech, if you could see it, even the media, speech needs have actually increased nationally, there's some other theories besides COVID on why speech needs may be increasing in terms of uh, more time possibly on technology and less time speaking with one another, uh, might be increasing speech needs for certain families and kids. Uh, we also contract with services, so not everyone who provides services for our special education students is a CHADM employee. We contract a day and a half of additional speech and language therapy. We also have a five-day-a-week occupational therapist and a two, two-day-a-week uh, physical therapist. For our students who don't attend CHADM, we have a couple of additional contracted services that we pay for uh, vision therapy and music therapy are two uh, of the additional contracted services that we will contract for, for the students. When we uh, then we have our outplace students, uh, and that drives a big part of the budget there, expensive uh, higher-cost students, and we can get reimbursement back for some of these students. We have thirteen this year, and we're anticipating thirteen next year, however, it's always a moving target. We're still in the middle of annual reviews, uh, students move in or out of district, that could change that number very quickly. Uh, but right now, there's nine students in private special education programs and four in Questar programs. Uh, big kudos to Josh, he has done a wonderful job transporting the students, it isn't always easy, uh, talking thirteen students, uh, nine different schools. So it's uh, it's not an easy thing that I don't go, because they have different needs, the students, there's, you know, programs, there's specific needs. Uh, but he combines the students, he has, you know, when schools are near each other, he combines them and still finds a way to keep the routes as short as possible for those students. Out of those thirteen, two, two are residentially placed students, however, we only pay for the academic portion of their day program, they are in uh, CRP beds, Children Residential Project beds by the state for uh, students with specific needs or hard-to-play students to get approval for state ed for that, so we aren't paying for the residential component for the, uh, for those students. Well, I'm anticipating thirteen students again next year, it's not going to be the same thirteen, uh, we have one student aging out, and we have one student we're anticipating returning to district. For the majority of our students, when we outplace them, the idea is that they can gain the skills in these specialized programs to bring them back often, and we have had, had success. We have one student we brought back uh, this past year who is thriving, which is, it's so exciting to see how well that student has done. Uh, and we're looking to bring one more back, but we are sending referrals for two more students, so I think it's going to stay at thirteen for those students. We're also going to continue to run three extended school year programs. So we'll have three classrooms for special education needs within district, in addition to any of the general education, summer school that may be run. The standard through state ed to qualify for special education, ESY extended school year is quite steep. Uh, the idea is significant regression, they define significant regression by as the number of weeks you're out is the number of weeks it would take to get you back to that skill level. So if the student missed eight weeks in the summer, it would take them eight weeks in the fall to get back to where they were, and that's the standard. So our special education teachers and other therapists collect data on breaks. So when we're going into our Christmas break, April break, there's data collection on their skill sets, and when they come back, you're checking how long it takes them and how much their regression is. So we have students to cover three classrooms uh, for extended school year. So, also, just in terms of, I mentioned this in the past year, we do cover three of our special education teachers in this year, one teacher's assistant salary through the IDA, six eleven grand, so some of the salaries are covered through grant funding. Uh, and that helps alleviate some of the budget piece on that. One of the things I like to talk about too is a special education teacher at MED, so it's been a long time since MED has had a special education teacher at each grade level, so what me and Mrs. Reno have been doing each year is moving people around. So someone might be covering fourth grade, but we're going to move them out for two hours a day to go to kindergarten first, and then they move back, so it's, we're in a very reactionary model right now. Like, how can we support the needs of kindergarten and first graders? We're at a point where we're seeing increasing needs at that level. And trying to, every year, trying to piecemeal really a program to meet the needs of those students, or it's getting increasingly challenging. For the past three consecutive years, we've had a additional special education teacher at the middle school to meet some of the additional needs there, it hasn't been a ten-year-track position. Uh, it has been a year-to-year position, that position is no longer needed at that middle school level. So one of the things I'd like to propose is that becomes a ten-year-track special education teacher at MED to meet the needs. This would allow a designated person to work with the kindergarten first grade level. If needs exist, it also allows us to look at possibly, while looking at the grade levels of having a co-teaching model, we haven't had co-teaching at MED start until second grade, so people have a special education teacher push in to those classrooms for the needs, and have that co-teaching model would be very beneficial. Have someone who knows them through the co-teaching model, possibly also do their resource room and special teaching class, provide some consistency for those students would also be useful. The teacher would also, with their literacy skills and special education teacher, be able to provide some early intervention literacy's uh, specific literacy teaching for the students, even if they're not identified yet, but they are in kind of that CSE pipeline, where they're being in tier-three intervention, they're going to child study teams, meetings. You know, I know right now MED is meeting on two to three kids, meet for child study team, they study there, so uh, and a lot of those are coming to CSE as referrals, we have a pretty sharp increase right now with referrals. We haven't had evaluations or meeting, I don't know how many of them will be eligible yet, but there is, we are seeing an increase. So that special education teacher would be able to help meet those needs. Now, so this is a brief overview, special education, you guys have any questions? So what have, what we're doing right now to spread the students, that there's certain grade levels that have two co-teaching, so we would, you know, for the sixth grade levels, it would have six special education teachers at MED. But they may not necessarily be assigned that way depending on needs. So for example, based on the number of students who have co-teaching and resource room needs in fourth grade, we have two special education teachers assigned to that. Otherwise, so according to regulations, we cannot have more than fifty percent of a classroom having special education students, because if we have, say we have thirteen students with special education needs, all with co-teaching on their IEP, that can increase that classroom to twenty-six students. Stay within regulations. So to make smaller class sizes, we might have two special education teachers assigned to that grade level. So, and it changes a little bit from year to year, so it definitely would give us a lot more flexibility from Mrs. Reno to like, work and place students based on those needs.
The, the um, certifications for that position are K through six? Okay, so you can move them anywhere?
Yes.
We did, we did, someone popped your bubble on that one already, so I said, I knew that one was coming, um, but uh, that sounds right to me. Um, I, clearly, you know, getting the special education intervention in earlier is better than later.
Clearly is better, there's tons of research on that, on reading levels, based on, you know, you've probably heard many times, based on a student's reading level, by the time they reach third grade, is, you know, how they're going to continue to read as, into adulthood.
Well, and, and the numbers we saw several meetings ago, uh, from the the analysis we saw was staggering, you know, uh, beginning of the year, so.
It's also a tricky little piece too, as we're going through the evaluations, and they're doing, they're collecting RTI data, and IAS teachers are working really hard, you know, we're looking at right now, are students who are having difficulties, a true learning disability, which it very well might be, or are we looking at COVID-related learning loss, and they're going to catch up? So there's a lot of uh, deep analysis into that right now.
But as a previous first-grade teacher for thirty-some years, the effect of, to me, a child trying to learn how to read without being able to see their teacher's lips as they're framing the words is critical.
A hundred percent, you know, those phonemic awareness skills, it's come up so much in my meetings in the past week or two, as we're going through it, where students' speech and patterns are showing up in their reading, and their writing patterns too, and they're, they are so incredibly.
I mean, that's, I think I've been doing silent prayers for over two months to get the masks off for just that reason.
You know, we had clear masks for a speech and language pathologist to use, but there were some hindrances to that, they would fog up, and you know, eventually it became not even worth using them.
I don't have any questions here for you, Brian, so anyone else?
Right, you know where to find it.
All right, next, next time we'll put you before transportation, we'll be slightly more energetic. Those are long budget meetings.
That concludes our superintendent's report.
Okay, so um, that's it for budget, we are into board committee reports. Um, Chris, facilities to you.
We, we have a follow-up uh, facilities committee meeting next Thursday, the thirty-first, with the uh, architectural design team to go through some uh, specific items in the building condition survey to drill down and make some um, decisions as to where we're going uh, in the near term, with some recommendations for improvements. Uh, we don't have specifics on those yet, but in general, we are looking at uh, some necessary uh, upgrades to certain parts of buildings that are failing, you know, examples might be something related to the roof or the outside or the masonry, uh, that are very important to consider, and other things, um, we definitely want to consider uh, is some instructional uh, upgrades as well. So we hope to have some specifics uh, coming up in the near future for the board to consider.
Okay, um, you need anything from us?
Just your smile. Just your smile.
All right, clearly, we're going to dig in more on facilities later in the year. We're back to old business here, uh, we have policy second readings, uh, just going to read the list real quick here, they're all for public, uh, there's a binder up there which is floating someplace. Anyone wants to look at them, but they're, they're online as well. It's an update to uh, update and new policies, but not necessarily new practices in the school, really just, um, we've split some of the policies apart on separate documents, uh, nondiscriminate, anti-harassment, equal opportunity policy, uh, thirty-four twenty, we got thirty-four forty for um, sexual harassment, thirty-four, uh, sixty-one twenty-one for sexual harassment of employees, seventy-five fifty, student harassment, bullying prevention and intervention. And um, draft seventy-five fifty-one, sexual harassment of students, um, I don't see any changes since last time. Uh, nothing new here? We had some formatting things, right? Okay. All right. Um, I know this is a big packet, does anyone on the board have any comments they want to bring forward on this batch? Okay. Went through those pretty deeply last time. All right, well, so we're into consensus agenda. R fifty-seven, be it resolved at the Board of Education, accept consensus agenda I through K as written, can I have a motion? Uh, any questions or comments on this batch?
I have one question.
Which item?
Uh, I only have the component because my computer's died, but um, it's the non-teaching support staff recommendation uh, relating to the substitute school bus attendant.
I'm trying to figure out which one that is. Do we have a paper one week? Is this the, the uh, the per diem substitute? No. It's a transportation bus attendant, is that what you're looking at? Okay, what's the question?
Is there a requirement for this position to work with students, other than the capacity of the, I I'm just a little confused as to the what this exactly is?
It's, we're just adding an extra uh, school bus attendant sub in the rotation, right?
Okay.
Bus attendant, um, Josh, you might be able to help us, but basically there are some bus runs on that require an attendant, uh, some of the special education runs.
Oh, I see, okay, all right, thank you.
That's not the only time you might consider an attendant, sometimes if you have some disciplinary issues on a run, you might put an attendant, but I I think for the most part, when we have an attendant on a bus, it's, it's basically a requirement that.
Thank you.
Is that enough for you, Chris?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, any other questions on uh, consensus agenda? Okay, all in favor? All right, any opposed? Okay, I through K is passed, uh, we have included in that was um, our school holiday calendar for next year, guys? The same as this year, but with different Fridays. Okay, so we're uh, into items for future agenda. Does anyone have any items they want to table for future consideration on the board agenda? Okay. We're back around to sec- second public comment. You know, I, I missed this in board comment earlier, uh, just a reminder to everyone before we join second public comment, but if there's any public online that wants to raise their digital hand for a comment on an issue relating to the school, there's a button at the bottom, raise hand, um, if there's someone here in the room, they can step up to the microphone. The thing I want to remember uh, to remind board members is um, it's time for our superintendent uh, mid-year review check, so um, we're not going to do anything about that today, what I'm asking the board members to do is to, I think I clicked the button I needed to click there, uh, or maybe there was nothing I needed to do, but it seemed like the next thing to do was to end it, so.
Okay, once I turn it over to you, I don't know what your side looks like, so you may not have to do anything.
So you guys uh, just need to go in there and look at all of the great evidence Sal has uploaded, and um, and really just give us some feedback on how you think he's doing this year, so we can get him some feedback before it's a whole year since we last had this conversation, we'll do this again over the summer.
Well, we'll, you, the end of the year review, no, it'll be um, turn it back over to you, um, kind of the end of May.
Okay.
And then we'll finalize it before the end of the school year.
Yeah, okay, so not summer, not quite.
So just, this is kind, there's no, there's no action you need to take in terms of, um, I don't even know if they allow you in the program to do it.
They do allow you to like, fiddle, but um, really, what we're going to do is we're going to go into executive session and we're going to discuss. So, but feel free to go in the platform, take notes, um, scores, comments, um, there'll be a more formal version of this uh, at the end of the year. But we're going to do that at the uh, the next uh, meeting, we'll do a, an executive session for that, okay? So just take time to, to look over all that stuff, um, do we have any digital hands here?
We do not.
Okay, anyone in the room? Okay, uh, I think we're, we're out of here, so um, can I have a motion to adjourn? On paper? Okay, adjourned.